So as a preliminary matter, this is Larry Murphy, Chair of the Newbury Planning Board. Permit me to confirm that all members and persons anticipated on the agenda are present and can hear me. Planning Board members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Peter Pecos?
Yes.
Woody Knight?
Yes.
Mary Stone?
Yes.
Scott Kinter?
Not yet.
No. Steve Manjoe?
Yes.
And town staff, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Martha Taylor, Planning Director?
Yes.
And Kristen Grubbs, Assistant Town Planner. And we don't have any anticipated speakers on the agenda. So this is the April 3, 2024, open meeting of the Newbury Planning Board, and it's being conducted remotely, consistent with Chapter 2 of the Acts of 2023, which extends the governor's March 12, 2020, order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, general laws, Chapter 30A, Section 20, until March 31, 2025. This order suspends the requirement of the open meeting law to have all meetings in a publicly accessible physical location and allows public bodies to meet entirely remotely, so long as reasonable public access is afforded, so that the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meetings. For this meeting, the Newbury Planning Board is convening by video conference via Zoom, as posted on the Planning Board's agenda, which can be found on the town's website, and which identifies how the public may join. You may join by going to http://zoom.us and entering meeting ID 83271413056, passcode 108790, by calling 19292056099, and entering the meeting ID number and passcode when prompted. Please note that this meeting is being recorded and that attendees are participating by video and/or telephone conference. The meeting is also being broadcast live through local access cable channel 9 on Zoom, and that www.tncp.org, and the recording will be available on the Newbury Access YouTube channel. Meeting materials were provided to the board members prior to the meeting for review. Applicants or their representatives may be called upon to speak and, if needed, share information to the screen. Please state your intention after you have been called. Before we turn to the first item on the agenda, please permit me to cover the ground rules for effective and clear conduct of our business and to ensure accurate meeting minutes. As Chair, I will introduce each speaker on the agenda. After speakers conclude their remarks, I will go down the list of board members, inviting each by name to provide any comment, questions, or motions. Please hold until your name is called. Further, for all attendees, except board members and staff, please remember to mute your computer using your mute button or your phone using *6 to toggle mute or unmute when you're not speaking. Please use earbuds or earphones with tablets and cell phones. Please remember to speak clearly and in a way that helps generate accurate minutes. Please be aware that video participants can see you and that you should take care not to screen share your computer. Anything that you broadcast may be captured by the recording. For any response, please wait until I yield the floor to you and state your name before speaking. If board members wish to engage in discussion with other members, please do so through me, taking care to identify yourself when you wish to speak. There will be an opportunity for public comment and questions during public hearings. After board members have spoken, I will afford the public an opportunity to comment and/or ask questions as follows. I will seek questions and comments through the Zoom Raise Hand function. For video conference participants to raise your hand, hover over the bottom of the Zoom window below the photo gallery and click on the gray hand that appears. Please ensure your name is fully and correctly displayed on the -- excuse me, on the participant list. You may rename yourself by using the More function next to your name. For telephone participants to raise your hand in a Zoom meeting at *9 on your phone keypad. I will then allow questions and comments from members of the public who have raised their hands in the order in which they are listed, which is determined by the order in which people click on the Raise Hand function. Each participant will be called on to provide his or her name and address, and then ask a question or make a comment. I will afford the applicant or participant or his or her representative the opportunity to reply. Your hand will be lowered when you have been given the floor for your questions. I will then continue down the list of those in the Raised Hand column and again afford the participant, applicant, or representative an opportunity to speak. Should there be a physical or electronic submitted questions or concerns, they will note -- they will be noted for the record, and again, the participant, applicant, or representative will be afforded the opportunity to speak if the issues raised have not yet been addressed. And finally, please note that each vote taken in this meeting will be conducted by roll call vote. So turning to the agenda, the first item on the agenda is an A and R submission, but I understand that that's not ready to go forward tonight, so we'll pass over that. The next item is the March 2024 financial report. And the following payroll warrants for the Planning Director and Assistant Planner were processed, PR 24-19 for the pay period ending 3/9/24, and PR 24-20 for the pay period ending 3/23/24. Under Planning Board expense invoices, Verizon Wireless, Planning Board iPad, 3/27/24, and under escrow accounts for Joseph Suetka, construction inspections for 68 Green Street, also known as Farmview Lane subdivision, 3/27/24. The next item on the agenda, under new business, is overview of proposed revisions to Chapter 117, subdivision of land and site plan review submission requirements and procedures. And we need to set a public hearing date. Martha, for the subdivision of land regulations, isn't that correct?
Public hearing for modifying both, yes.
Yeah, it was my understanding that -- I'm sorry, go ahead. Why don't you go ahead? And if you could just bring us up to speed on this.
Sure, so these are primarily related to the town's MS4, which is municipal small sewer system, general permit, which is issued by the Environmental Protection Agency. And the permit was issued back in 2016. And we have had compliance requirements each year. As it turned out, some of our regulations and bylaws, unfortunately, need to be slightly amended to be in compliance. We have a consultant who's been working with James Serret, who's heading up our stormwater program to help prepare the annual stormwater report, as well as doing outfall testing and that kind of thing. And she has reviewed the stormwater -- well, the stormwater rules and regulations and our site plan review submission requirements, and noted a few things that need to be updated. Since those are regulations, we do not need town meeting approval for those. The board can amend those, but they need to be done through a public hearing process. There is also some bylaw changes that need to be made. Unfortunately, those can only go to town or be adopted by town meeting. And it's too late for this town meeting to do that, so we're going to have to sort that out. So that involves both some amendment to our site plan review bylaw as well as our stormwater bylaw. So Larry, if you'd like, I can pull the changes up on the screen, or we can
Yeah, why don't you do that, Martha?
Okay, I'll see. I'm doing this from my home computer. Hopefully, it will everything will work. So site plan submission first. So Renee has noted that, under our application procedure, we need to explicitly note that during the pre-application conference will be including discussion about potential water quality impacts and incorporation of low impact development, site planning, and design strategies for both Level 1 and Level 2 site plan review. Lots of times, quite honestly, Level 1 is very minor and doesn't include potential water quality impacts. But if there were to be some, you know, they need to be explicitly discussed. The other thing that needs to be done is a revision to our record drawing. Some of you may remember, actually, back in 2020, we did amend these. John O'Connell had -- who had been on top of our stormwater program for many, many, many years and leading the charge and getting us ahead of the requirements, had proposed some changes, which we adopted at that point. But we need to actually do more now, specifically about onsite stormwater controls. So those are the changes to our submission requirements and procedures that need to be done. I will stop sharing this now and call up the subdivision regulations. And the change here, again, is with respect to requirements for storm record drawings and the same requirement that she had recommended adding to the site plan review regulations. So, you know, it's relatively straightforward. We were thinking that it might be a good opportunity to take a look, maybe particularly at the site plan reviews, submission requirements, and procedures, to see if there's anything else that might be appropriate to amend at this point. But the time-sensitive part of this really has to do with, you know, compliance with the MS4 general permit and meeting EPA's requirements. We have a deadline of June 30 of this year to get that done. So does anybody have any questions about any of that?
Seems pretty straightforward.
All right, so if we could take a look at the calendar, I think the earliest would be our May 1 meeting. And I know James is very eager to get this taken care of. So we would need to have the public hearing advertised by the 15th, which is actually a holiday. So it probably might need to be in the paper before that. So the ad would need to get in next week. If we wanted to give ourselves an opportunity to do a review ourselves and see if there's anything else we want to change, I think we could aim for the May 15 meeting. That would still be, you know, I'm going to make an assumption, which is always dangerous, but that we could -- it would be one public hearing that wouldn't need to be continued and that we could, you know, still meet the June 30 deadline if we do that. But it really, obviously, it depends on your schedules if you have any conflicts with either of those meeting dates. So May 1 or May 15.
My only comment is that May 1 is the day after the annual town meeting.
Yes.
It might put you in something of a time crunch to get everything together, or would it?
Yeah, it's hard to say. I think immediately after town meeting, we have to put everything, you know, if the bylaw is adopted, we'll need to get everything ready for submission to the Attorney General's Office. And we do have some information sessions, which Kristen will talk about, leading up to town meeting. So the 15th might be a little bit more of a comfortable date.
Anyone have any thoughts about that?
15th sounds great. Would you like a motion?
I wouldn't be -- I won't be here on the 1st. I'll be in New Hampshire.
All the more reason.
Okay, but you'll be here on the 15th, Mary?
15th, indeed, I will.
Okay.
Sounds good. Okay. Did I hear a motion, Pete?
There you have it.
Second, to hold a public hearing on these matters on May 15? 7:15?
15.
Via Zoom. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Woody. Any discussion? Then Pete, how do you vote?
Yes.
Woody, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mary, how do you vote?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. So we got the 15th, Martha.
Thank you very much. All right, and if there are any other revisions that we feel would be appropriate to take up at this time, we'll get those ready for the next planning board meeting, so it's the 17th.
Okay, that's good.
Go over those.
The next item on the agenda, under new business, is a discussion regarding putting a public comment segment on our planning board agenda. Quick background, at least as I understand it, is there have been some recent developments in the law that impact the way we allow public comment outside of public hearings. So in other words, for other non-public hearing agenda items. And I guess the recommendation now is that, rather than allow people to comment during the course of going through the various items on the agenda, that it's recommended that a better way to go is to have the public comment section in the agenda. But there are certain restrictions to that. And Martha, maybe you could -- the planning, excuse me, the Select Board and FinCon have both adopted guidelines for that, that they put on their agenda. Martha, do you have those you could put up?
I do. Or I should, anyway. A second, it's
Written in front of me, if you want me to just read them.
Yeah, maybe, although I had, I actually had one from the Finance Committee last night, which handled it in an interesting way. Let me see, I think I may have it. Yep, can you, oops, it's loading. Can you see this now?
Yes.
So this first portion up here is the standard public comment thing that both the Finance Committee and the Select Board have at the beginning of their meetings, which is to receive oral communication from members of the public. Members of the public may address, in this case, the Finance Committee for up to three minutes. Finance Committee will not engage in discussion on topics raised during public comment, but may choose to add the topic to a future agenda. This agenda segment will be limited to 15 minutes. Last night, the Finance Committee went through the warrant and took their votes on all of the warrant articles that they felt were appropriate for their recommendation. And Erica, the Chair, had actually added some anticipating that there might be public comment on some of the other, you know, some of the agenda items specifically. She provided, again, language allowing public comment, in this case, limited up to 10 minutes on that particular agenda item. And this isn't anything that we've discussed, but I thought it was kind of an interesting way to, you know, perhaps allow discussion as we go through the agenda, if there are things that we know the public might want to comment on. So I'm just throwing, you know, throwing out there that out there is that there is some precedent for doing that.
Yeah, and it would make sense for it was something of great public interest that isn't technically a public hearing. One thing I think we would have to do, if it's if the board decides we're going to go on this route, we would have to have some language in the initial public comment section pointing out that they could not comment on matters that actually are the subject of a public hearing and would have to reserve their their comments until the public hearing. But I anyway, I just wanted to, just got the sense of the board, how you feel about going in this direction. Pete?
I think it's a good idea, Larry. I like the idea of the first public comment that was being made and then specific the second with the 10-minute limit to anything that might be of interest. And I think the third component of having probably guidance, just to make sure that we have the correct wording regarding our active public hearings, you know, from legal. But I think, you know, having those components would be really appropriate.
Good, thank you. Woody, thoughts?
I think it's good as well. Pete has said it well, and also, if there was public comment, whether we got it open, this is a question. If there was public comment and it was not the public comment was not regarding a public hearing that we had, whether it was that night or not, we wouldn't speak of it. But would we have this public comment segment in the very beginning of the meeting? I guess is my question.
Yes, I think that's the intention. And but you're right, if you look at the what the FinCon has done, which is essentially what the Select Board did, we can't actually discuss these things, but they could be the topic of a future agenda item. Now, it's clumsy, but to put it that way, but I think that's the takeaway from these couple, at least one, if not more, court cases that have come down, giving guidance on public comment at the public meetings. And I'm not articulating that very well, but I think you get my point.
Yes. And I think it would be best to start the meeting with the public comment and get it out of the way. Because a lot of our hearings don't start till 7:15, so I think it's a good
Right, yeah, we would have that advantage too. And then, as was pointed out, if there were particular items we felt that we wanted to allow the public to comment on as they were taken up on the agenda, we could also add an additional section. Mary, what's your feeling?
All right, an additional section where?
No, I'm not saying we do it in every case, but there was something that was not a public hearing, but that might have, you know, some public interest. We could also have an additional provision in there to allow public comment at that time.
Okay.
Because my understanding is, if if we don't have these ground rules in place, then the public comment
Bingo.
section can, or public comment can get out of control, I guess. We don't have much control over it or the time spent on it. Did that answer your question?
Yes, thank you, Larry.
Steve, your thoughts?
I think it's a good idea to have public comment. And I think the way it's worked with the Select Board and now perhaps the FinCon, it's a good road map that's worked in terms of controlling the amount of time for the debate to ensue. So I fully support it.
Good, thank you. Martha, I don't know that we need a formal vote on this. I think perhaps we could leave it that you and I can work together and see if we can come up with some language that Town Council would approve and bring that back to the board.
Yeah, I think that would be, I think that would be good. Certainly, whatever we come up with, especially adding language about public hearings. And if we also want to include this sort of public comment opportunity partway through an agenda, we're appropriate, I want to run all of that by Town Council.
Yeah, all right. I think we're all in agreement, so let's plan to do that, and we'll be back with something to the board. Okay, next item on the agenda is old business, which is none. Now we have liaison reports for the Select Board. Martha, do you have anything?
Just very briefly, they did meet on the 26th of March, and the bulk of the agenda was clam licenses. But Bill DeMayo gave a very brief report. He Sean Riordan, the mayor of Newburyport, has basically assembled a committee to look at the Whittier Regional Agreement. And Bill is serving as Newbury's representative with Tracy as an alternate. So he just gave a very brief update. I think they're trying to wade through it. And every time you have a regional, it was hard, and it's been hard enough with Triton's regional agreement. But when you've got 11 communities, it's going to be a task. So they're just beginning that process, and that was really the only thing of note.
Thanks, Martha. For ZBA, I really don't have anything. I reported at our last meeting on their March meeting, and I don't know what they have coming up for April, but I'll be able to report on that at our next meeting. What do you think from conservation?
Conservation met last night. The only thing I recall being on the agenda that pained to us was on Main Street, 17 Main, I think it was, when we saw it. It was the A and R lot changes, and they're just starting the process on one of the lots, so with conservation. So other than that, I don't, we have a sidewalk on Friday as well. But other than that, that was it that I recall.
All right, thanks, Woody. And welcome, Scott.
Hey, sorry I'm late. Had a little bit of emergency, but
I hope everything's all right.
Everything's good, thank you.
But we're down on the liaison reports right now, and that leaves MVPC, Martha.
So two meetings to report on. The Commissioners met on the 21st of March. Guest speaker at that meeting was Derek Schuster from MassDOT, who gave a TIP, STIP 101 course. TIP is the Transportation Improvement Plan, and STIP is State Transportation Improvement Plan. And unfortunately, it was a hybrid meeting. I was participating by Zoom, so the slideshow was not cooperating particularly. So we, those of us in our offices didn't get the full benefit. But it was basically an overview of how the, you know, how the TIP works, which is very complicated. And I will say, even after sitting through that, it's still a little bit of a mystery to me. But, you know, it just goes, again, to kind of point out how MVPC tries to help us in bringing relevant speakers to talk about the things that we're all involved in. And they did have program updates from all of their all of their staff members. There was also a planners' meeting on the 28th. And we had updates from all of their program managers, particularly on the things that were, you know, were all involved in. Obviously, the MBTA communities and their environmental programs, Vision Zero, which is a transportation initiative funded by a Shared Streets and Spaces grant aiming toward zero fatal injuries and zero significant crashes and technology. They are, I think I might have mentioned this before, they are in the process of updating MIMAP. And they're that will be rolling out. It's an 18-month grant that's doing this, but they're hoping to get it done sooner than that. So that's something that will keep you up to speed on, just because it's such a tremendously useful tool for all of us. And that's it.
Okay, thank you. I'm going to turn back to you, Martha, for the Planning Director's report.
Okay. So a few things last night. If you were actually reading the Finance Committee's agenda, the FinCon did vote on their recommendations regarding the warrant articles. And because there is a financial impact related to the MBTA multifamily zoning, they decided, they're generally, they do not vote on zoning articles. But in this case, they decided, because there is a financial impact, it was appropriate for them to do so. So there was discussion. Lisa Mead was there, Town Council, and was able to field some of their questions. And so the final vote actually was six voted to recommend. The six in favor, one opposed, and no abstentions. And the person who was opposed, I think, had some concerns about long-term long-term cost of, you know, schoolchildren and, you know, other impacts on the town that might might outweigh the loss of state funding and other considerations, so. We have been continuing to work with Ian and Kayla on getting a new fact sheet updated and scheduling some information sessions, one of which they'll be at. And Kristen, do you want to talk about that public outreach component?
Sure, thanks, Martha. So we've done a news release announcing the dates and times of the info session just on the planning news page. So that is up on the town website. And we're in the process of getting the town to send that out on social media and on the homepage. But for all of you and for those of you listening, we will be holding info sessions in advance of we will be holding info sessions uh um in advance of town meeting to discuss the multifamily zoning amendment in particular. Um, the first one is Saturday, April thirteenth, um nine thirty to eleven AM, and that that is in Town Hall in the offices um in the Select Board Meeting Room on the second floor. That'll be uh Martha and I will be available sort of on a drop in basis that morning, so there's no particular program. We'll have information and be available to answer questions um after people do their dump runs, they can come visit us in Byfield and we'll have some donuts or something. Um, so that's Saturday morning, April thirteenth. And then we're gonna have two others. One is Tuesday, April sixteenth, from five to six thirty. Um, that's Town Offices late day, open till seven anyway, so again, those will be drop in office hours. And then finally, uh Wednesday, April twenty fourth, the week before Town Meeting. Um, we're having a slightly more formal um presentation with um Mayor Mac Valley Planning Commission. Ian and Kayla are going to join us um at six, starting at six thirty. So Wednesday, April twenty fourth, at six thirty, again, in the um hearing room on the second floor of the Town Offices. Um, we've also been updating the fact sheets and those are available online, and if people are interested in sharing them, sharing paper copies, we're happy to you know, provide those to you and and let you um share them if you have any audiences or meetings or other um places to get those out and about, um that would be really helpful. Did I miss anything, Martha?
No, I think you covered it well. Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you both. Does that conclude the planners' report, Martha?
Yeah, uh no, actually it doesn't. Kristen, what about the COA? Do you want to mention that one as well?
Um, I think that's people who've already signed up, but um next week, there's an event happening at the COA, and I've been talking with Cindy, the Director, about ways to um communicate about this housing initiative with some of the older people in town who um, you know, some of the conversation about the demograph, the aging demographics of the town of Newbury and that um we have a lot of three and four bedroom homes, but not so much opportunity for people to downsize if they're um you know, if they're at a point in their life where that's desirable. So just kind of sharing that conversation about some of the housing data and projections and how this initiative to create zoning opportunities for um producing more affordable and um smaller size uh dwelling units. So anyway, Cindy was very open to that discussion and you know, going to places where people are coming already is something we're interested in doing more of. Um, so next Thursday, um no, next Tuesday evening at game night, we'll also be talking about housing, so. Very grateful to the COA for kind of welcoming that discussion um with their programming. And Bill de Mayo um on the Select Board is also sort of helping do that presentation with me. He's very involved in the COA, so.
Good, thank you.
So um just a couple of other things. Um, we do have a couple of applications that um people are trying to tee up right now. Uh Vince Godin has been in touch with us um to have a pre-application conference for the Sunset Club. And um we're looking at probably next week, uh potentially Thursday morning, so that we can get the appropriate town staff there. Um, he also said that he would welcome somebody from the planning board to attend, obviously. You know, um, you know, so if one or two members wanted to be there, not not a quorum, because this would not be a formal hearing. Please let me know when I can make sure that um that we um include you in the in the meeting invitation. That'll probably be at Town Hall. Uh, the other one is um the Forest Street property, which was um, you know, has been on on the market and that there is someone who is is interested in that. We've had a preliminary informal conversation and are looking to meet with the fire department and sort of get a get a few things answered before they they move forward. Um, we did have a site meeting at sixty eight Green Street yesterday, the Farmview Lane um subdivision to continue uh looking at um some of the stormwater issues that are there. One is ponding at the end of the road where where it meets um Green Street. And uh James, our DPW Director, was there, as was Sean, our our new conservation agent, uh to talk about a solution, and they're moving forward with with that. Um, everybody seemed to feel that since it's related to the project and it's immediately adjacent to the roadway, that that um this could could go forward. And then there's some some stormwater issues related um to grading at both Lot One and Lot Two, which are kind of ongoing, but we talked about some some solutions and hopefully those will those will be satisfactorily addressed. Um Mike De Santos, or actually his his attorney, Bill Heaney, mentioned that uh Lot Two is now under agreement. They are hoping to close on that soon, so Mike is is would like to come in to request release of Lot Two from the Performance Covenant, which will involve, since he's not done with the project, it will involve probably greater greater re- real uh request to get really to release the Performance Covenant altogether and provide funds in escrow, whether it's a bond or some other form for the remaining amount, so. Um, Mike is going to have his engineer, um Millennium, put together and his contractors put together cost, which will have reviewed by Joe to see, you know, determine the appropriate amount. So his hope, as I said, is to get on the eight, April seventeenth agenda that may be a little optimistic, so we'll we'll have to see. But um those are, those are my items. And Steve, have Steve, you've got your head raised.
Yes, please, if I may, Mr. Chair, uh Martha, if it's appropriate, I'd be interested in seeing what the agenda looks like regarding Sunset Club. I may, if appropriate, give you some feedback or not, or at least be aware of what is on the table from the Sunset Club. Uh, you know, I'm in that delicate position of being a nearer butter to the uh operation. So I want to be sensitive to being kosher about the whole thing. So if you can, I'd love to see the agenda. If you can't, we can ride it out.
Yeah, I'm not, there's not really a particular agenda, um but it's it is to come in and, you know, sort of talk, talk through what their proposal is to um, you know, see, make sure that they're addressing everything that needs to be addressed before the before the application comes in, so. Um, he is, Vince is having an updated plan done. I've asked him to send us something that delineates all of the resource areas. He's going to say and send an old plan, which I can certainly forward to all of you, and then when the new one comes in, I can forward that as well.
And that's next Thursday, Martha?
That's what we're aiming for right now. Um, that was Vince's suggestion, and it looks like um at the moment, it looks like the key people from the town are available, but I need to to follow up on that and confirm.
Well, if it's Thursday morning, I'm available to uh participate if uh if you'd like.
Okay, that that would be great, yeah. I think um if one or two of you would like to be there, that would be super, um. Yeah, just we don't want three, because then we'll have to post it as a meeting, which is not.
I I know I cannot, so that leaves for, you know.
Uh Martha, where is it going to be held again in the meeting?
Um, I'm assuming that it will be in in probably in the in our hearing room at Twelve Kent Way.
Okay, all right. Um, and again, the time, sorry.
Yeah, it hasn't hasn't been set yet.
Oh, okay, that's why I was, yeah, I'd be very interested.
And again, we're we're really only looking for maximum of two people, so that we don't have a
Right, okay.
So maybe ma- maybe you guys can sort it out among yourselves.
All right.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Martha, um I have one more thing related to MVPC's sort of regional work. Um, I just thought the board might be interested in um their their Safe Streets and Roads for All program that I know Martha just mentioned and we've talked about, but the Vision Zero. There they have data that's available on a viewer that and they're looking to get it in front of um community groups, um bike pedestrian advocacy groups. Um, they're asking towns if there are any venues where, you know, they could go set up a table and get some foot traffic and get people participating in this. So one thing I want to do is get that information on the website and then, you know, do a news blast and at least have people able to view that. What it shows is the data where crashes have occurred in you know, across the region, but you can zoom in on Newbury and then um you know, they're also looking for data and input from the community members on places that they, you know, anecdotally also have concerns about or questions about or would like to see improved um active transportation corridors, things like that. So I just wanted to kind of give a heads up that I I would like to get that information more fully available to the public, and if any of you on the board are, you know, this sounds particularly interesting to you, I'd love to, you know, Martha and I can meet with you and talk a little more, maybe we can brainstorm together. Um and then just one, well, two two areas of town that that we've talked about with the staff are the crossing of Boston Road across Route One, where the flashing yellow is um near Martha's um familiar with that neck of the woods, trying to be a pedestrian crossing Route One there can be very tricky. So they invited um to set up an audit, like actually have a transit audit occur at that site. We're gonna be getting more information about that, but it would be you know, sort of standing there and observing with people who are very skilled professionals, um looking at traffic flow and um so that's an an area and then related to Plum Island, which is what made me think of it, um Plum Island Center is also an area that has sort of been identified as potential for improvements related to pedestrian um and different kinds of transportation um safety improvements. So again, just kind of wanted to mention that. It's a super interesting project. Um it's in early stages, looking for input. If people are interested in that, just feel free to reach out to me.
Very good, thank you, Kristen.
Thanks, Kristen.
Dave?
See you.
I definitely plan on reaching out to Kristen on that topic. I've uh seen this will be anecdotal again, but uh my will have to do with how bicyclists do not follow the rules of the road as I've seen them blast through crosswalks many a time when pedestrians are trying to cross the road. And it's one thing about thinking about capacity and how much we can say, come on down without proper enforcement. But I'll save that for more discussions with Kristen. Thank you.
Very good, thank you.
Yeah, I'll I'll just, that's the, I appreciate that, um Steve, for sure. And there are lots of complicated issues, obviously, about a barrier, beach island, um and all kinds of human interaction with the resources. Um, I will say both the police and DPW have been a part of some of these discussions, and I know there are lots of strategies that the town has been working on and continues to work on over the years, so I don't want it to seem like, you know, nothing's been happening over the years, but I think there it's always worth um just discussing and seeing if there are ways to improve. And there's a lot of money out there right now for um transportation and safety improvements, so there could be some ways that Newbury could get support to, you know, make some of these improvements um after the planning is done.
Sure.
Larry, if I could.
I look forward to contributing. I'm sorry, Peter.
No, no, I was just going to say, Larry, uh just to pipe in, I I think the that intersection uh with Boston, Boston Road, I think I didn't, you know, I was really hesitant about what they were doing in Riley about putting a traffic light on Route One and slowing down traffic. I gotta tell you, I think it really helps gobs a lot, because it just it slows down the speed of people hitting that next blinking light.
Yeah, that that was a particularly dangerous intersection. There's a lot of accidents that at particular intersection. Yeah.
Kristen, uh I'm sorry, Larry?
Yep.
Um, Kristen, where is the money coming from? When you said there was funding for?
Um, this planning project is money through um the Federal Transportation Act, I believe. I think it's federal money that's channeled through the state and then out to the regions. And there's I mean, there are actually a number of different ways that I think, like, certain areas of town, like Plum Island Center in particular, there are actually a number of different kinds of funding opportunities. There's additional money through this federal program, which would sort of necessitate a regional project, because it's you know, bigger dollars and communities sort of partnering together. Um, but the one stop, the Community One Stop Program, which is the state's sort of clearinghouse for all kinds of infrastructure-related grants, has a number of opportunities and um that's you know, we talked about that a little bit with the Finance Committee last night, because those are the kind of opportunities that um just to bring this conversation back around, but those are the kind of grant opportunities that Newbury would lose access to if we weren't compliant with the MBTA. So it's um there there's there's a lot of ways, and in most cases, there's a local match required for grants, so it's not to say the money's you know, free to the town. Um, you have to show that you're you're a partner in it and put up some local dollars, but um but it's it's out there.
That's great. Thanks, Kristen.
Good. Any anything further on the planners' report?
That's it?
No, okay. Well, we'll move on then. Thank you both. It was very informative. Last item on the agenda, the Planning Board meeting minutes uh from March sixth to March twentieth. March twentieth uh minutes aren't uh uh ready yet, so we'll pass over those. Has everyone had an opportunity to review the March sixth?
Yes.
Meeting minutes. I'm sorry, Mary?
Yes, I have.
Yes. Um, I have as well, and I I don't see any issues. Looks complete to me. Does anyone else have any uh thoughts on it? Would anyone care then to move to accept the uh March uh six twenty twenty four meeting minutes?
So moved, Larry.
Thank you, Mary. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Woody. Any discussion? Then Pete, how do you vote?
Yes.
Woody, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mary, how do you vote?
Yes, and thanks a lot for getting that together. Thank you.
Thanks, Scott. How do you vote?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well, so the March sixth twenty twenty four meeting minutes are approved. And that's it. At seven forty eight. Um, would anyone care to move to adjourn? Someone wants to go home. All right, Mary, thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Scott. Any discussion? And Pete, how do you vote?
Yes.
Woody, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mary, how do you vote?
Yes.
Scott, how do you vote?
Yes.
Yes, all right, and I vote yes as well.
Very cute.
All right, thank you all. It's a good meeting, a lot of good information.
Thank you.
Thanks, Larry. Thanks, Martha.
Thanks, Scott.